The flag salute. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Board of Commissioners' Public Meeting, Tuesday, February twenty first, two thousand and twenty three. The time is seven oh five. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty one, Public Law nineteen seventy five, notice of this meeting was published in December eighth, two thousand and twenty two, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board and a copy is on file in the Municipal Clerk's Office. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca.
Here.
Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. We have executive session minutes for January seventeen, two thousand and twenty three, and February seventh, two thousand and twenty three. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Communications?
Thank you, Mayor. We have, the VFW has submitted a social fair application for their food truck event for Thursday, April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty three, from four P M. to eleven P M. With a rain date of Thursday, May fourth, two thousand and twenty three, at two seventy one Washington Avenue in Nutley. And Commissioner Tucci has submitted an event application for the Franklin Summer Festival for June twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty three, from six P M. to ten P M. along Franklin Avenue between Chestnut Street and Williams Street. I need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for communications.
Reports, Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, I have my public safety data report. Thank you.
Bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill list for February twenty first, two thousand and twenty three. Public Affairs, twenty thousand, one hundred and eighty seven dollars and thirty eight cents. Revenue and Finance, two million, eight hundred and thirty two thousand, eighteen dollars and twenty seven cents. Public Safety, seventy eight thousand, two hundred and seventy two dollars and eleven cents. Public Works, one hundred and forty four thousand, five hundred and eighteen dollars and zero cents. Parks and Public Property, one hundred and eighty eight thousand, five hundred and twenty four dollars and twenty eight cents. Water Utility, six thousand, five hundred and eighty eight dollars and fifty four cents.
Need a motion?
We have, one moment, please. We have two payrolls for February third, two thousand and twenty three. The regular payroll total is eight hundred and eighty two thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and twenty six cents. Overtime payroll total is thirty six thousand, four hundred and forty seven dollars and fifty eight cents. Total payroll for February third, two thousand and twenty three, is nine hundred and nineteen thousand, one hundred and eighty seven dollars and eighty four cents. Payroll retro for February third, two thousand and twenty three. Retro payroll total, eight hundred and seventy one thousand, two hundred and eighty three dollars and three cents, for a grand total of five million, sixty thousand, five hundred and seventy nine dollars and forty five cents.
Move the bills. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioner on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements. Questions?
Nothing this evening.
Nothing, Mayor.
Nothing.
This past weekend, the, the Health Department had its annual Heart Health Month Walk. It was a great turnout, great way to promote heart health and avoid one of the, the leading killers of Americans these days is heart disease. Staying active is important, and we have such a great walkable town, especially with, with the parks. Thank you, Commissioner Tucci, for always being, making those parks look as beautiful as they do. I don't, I don't think we're going to have another Board of Commissioner meeting before the parade, so I just wanted to make an announcement that the Nutley Irish will be having their annual Saint Patrick's Day Parade on, on March fourth. Look forward to seeing everyone there.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Let's move on to ordinances for public hearing. Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, I don't have an ordinance, Mayor, but I do have a need for a, a, a public hearing relative to a grant that we will be submitting, submitting. And the purpose of this hearing is to obtain public comment on a grant application to be submitted to the two thousand and twenty three New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's Urban Parks Grant with the rollover to the Green Acres Land Acquisition and Park Development Program by the Township of Nutley. The application will detail the improvements, all right, in the form of a synthetic football field, softball field, rather, a, a hardball field, a football field, and a multipurpose field that's often used for, for soccer. Tonight's meeting, hearing is a requirement in order for us to successfully submit the applications. So, Mayor, with your permission, will entertain comments.
Anybody wish to be heard on Commissioner Tucci's, uh, public notice? Seeing none, Commissioner? Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca?
Yes, I have ordinance number three, five, zero, nine, this is for handicapped work and an ordinance to amend. An ordinance codified in the Code of Detention of Nutley, Chapter two, two, eight, titled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article seven, Special Zones and Areas, Section twenty nine A, entitled Handicapped Parking, to add to the location set forth. This is for forty one and Twistle Avenue. Move to open the public portion.
Anybody wish to be heard on ordinance number three, five, oh, nine? Seeing no one? Move to close?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
All right, move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, I have an ordinance on for second reading, and it's an ordinance to amend, an ordinance to fix the salaries of certain officers, employees effective January first, two thousand and twenty three. I, I moved to open the public comment, public hearing.
Anybody wish to be heard on ordinance number three, five, one, zero? Seeing none?
Uh, move to close?
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Move the ordinance?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Move right on to your, your resolutions.
Thank you, Mayor. We, I have one on for this evening. It's to recognize March as National Women's History Month, uh, two thousand and twenty three. Whereas in nineteen eighty eight, the month of March was designated by the United States Congress as National Women's History Month. Whereas Women's History Month promotes the teaching of women's history and the achievements of women throughout the world. Whereas it is important for the residents of the township to recognize the growing contributions and achievements of women of the Township of Nutley and the state of New Jersey. That therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners, the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, call upon all citizens of Nutley to observe the month of March as National Women's History Month, two thousand and twenty three, which time we will encourage all residents to recognize the courageous and powerful women, past, present, who have rendered a service to our nation, our state, and our township. Also therefore be resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley call upon citizens of Nutley to observe International Women's Day, Monday, March eighth, a global day celebrating economic, political, and social achievements of women's past, present, and future since nineteen eleven. Be further resolved that the residents are encouraged to join Nutley Department of Public Affairs and Health, the public schools, and the Nutley Women's Networking Group in recognizing and celebrating the lives and careers of local women during the month. A month-long celebration of Women's History Month, in particular, panel discussion is scheduled for Tuesday, March twenty first, six thirty P M. at Nutley High School. As I move the, the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca. Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, the County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer B. and she is hereby authorized to refund escrow monies for land use applications in the amount of thirteen thousand, four hundred and forty seven dollars and thirty four cents for the, uh, addresses and accounts that are listed in the resolution now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners. The Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, the Township Treasurer B. is hereby authorized to refund the escrow monies for said amount. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas proponent Federal Credit Union, one seventy three Bloomfield Avenue, has posted a performance cash bond in the amount of six thousand, one hundred and fifty nine dollars and twenty four cents, a, a performance surety bond in the amount of fifty five thousand, four hundred and thirty three dollars and sixteen cents, and a safety and stabilization guarantee in the amount of five thousand dollars for a total of sixty six thousand, five hundred and ninety two dollars and forty cents for completing improvements uh, at the property located at, on, at one seventy three Bloomfield Avenue. Whereas all improvements were inspected and approved by the Township of Nutley Code and Engineering Department, whereas in accordance with N J S A forty, colon, fifty five D dash fifty three, a resolution authorizing, authorizing the release of the above bonds and guarantee is required by the township, and whereas the Code Enforcement Department and the Engineering Department hereby recommend release of the bonds and guarantee in the total amount of sixty six thousand, five hundred and ninety eight dollars and fifty seven cents with interest. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, the Township Treasurer B. is hereby authorized to release the performance cash bond, the performance surety cash bond, and the safety and stabilization guarantee for the amount listed here into proponent Federal Credit Union, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund overpayments of tax charges in the amount of seven thousand, nine hundred and seventy nine dollars and thirty nine cents for the accounts listed in the resolution, so move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca. Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca?
Whereas Prepared Life Live is part of priority security and communication service of the Invictus App, Inc., and whereas Invictus App, Inc., Prepared Live Platform will give the Township of Nutley's dispatcher real-time access to data like video pictures, GPS locations, and text messages. And whereas Invictus App, Inc. is providing the service at no cost to the Township of Nutley. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey, that the contract is awarded to Invictus Apps, Inc., in the amount of zero dollars for the purchase of subscription to Prepared Life. The term of the contract will be completed upon delivery of goods and services. I'd like to just thank them for doing it for nothing. That's a first. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Well done, Commissioner. Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Governors Council of Alcoholism and Drug Abuse established the Municipal Alliance for the Prevention of Alcohol and Drug Abuse in nineteen eighty nine to educate encouraged residents, local government, and law enforcement officials, schools, non-for-profit organizations, and faith community, parents, youth, and other allies in effect for, to prevent alcoholism and drug abuse in communities throughout New Jersey in accordance coordination with this G C A D A, the New Jersey Department of Human Services Division of Mental Health and Addiction Services, has awarded a youth leadership grant to G C A D A Municipal Alliance Program, whereas Board of Commissioners and Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey recognizes that the abuse of alcohol and drugs is a serious problem in our society amongst persons of all ages, and therefore has been established Municipal Alliance Committee. And whereas the Board of Commissioners further recognize that think it is incumbent upon not only public officials, but upon the entire community to take action to prevent such abuses in our community. And whereas the Board of Commissioner has applied for D A, D M H A S, Youth Leadership Funding through the Governors Council of Alcoholism and Drug Abuse through the County of Essex, whereas the fiscal year has been extended to, for the period of three fifteen, two thousand twenty three, six two, six thirty, two thousand and twenty three, for the M H A S fund to be expended. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, hereby recognizes the following. The Board of Commissioners does and hereby authorize submission of the application for D M H A S grant funding for the Nutley Municipal Alliance for a year, one grant be extended three fifteen to six thirty, in the amount of five thousand, five hundred and fifty four dollars and thirty four cents. Where Commissioners acknowledges the terms and conditions for administrating the Municipal Alliance Grant, including the administrative compliance and audit requirements. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is a, uh, a resolution that goes along with that public hearing that we had a little while ago. Whereas the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program provides loans and, and or grants to municipal and county governments and grants to nonprofit organizations for assistance in the acquisition, development, and stewardship of lands for outdoor recreation and conservation purposes. And whereas the Township of Nutley desires to further the public interest by obtaining funding in the amount of one million, twenty eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy five dollars in the form of a one million, twenty eight thousand, seven seventy five matching grant, and if available, a zero dollar loan, which would be a grant, okay, from the state to fund the following projects, the Owens Park Turf Replacement Project at a cost like, um, amount. Whereas the state shall determine if the application is complete in conformance with the scope and intent of the Green Acres Program and notify the applicant of the amount of funding award. And whereas the applicant is willing to use state funds in accordance with such rules, regulations, and applicable statutes, and is willing to enter into an agreement with the state for the above named project. Now therefore be it resolved that the Mayor and Board of Commissioners is hereby authorized to, A, make application for such a loan and or such a grant, B, provide additional application information and furnish such documents as may be required, C, act as the authorized correspondent of the above named applicant. Now therefore be it resolved by the Nutley Board of Commissioners that the applicant has its matching share of the project if a match is required in the amount of, and we will find out what that is once they tell us, that in the event the state's funds are less than the total project cost specified above, the applicant has the balance of funding necessary to complete the project. Three, that the applicant agrees to comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, and regulations in its performance of the project. Four, that this resolution shall take effect immediately. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program is providing grants for the Urban Parks Initiative, and whereas the Township of Nutley desires to further the public interest by obtaining funding in the amount of one million, twenty eight thousand, seven hundred and seventy five dollars from the state to fund the following project, the Owens Park Turf uh, Replacement Project at a like amount, and whereas the state shall determine if the application is complete and in conformance with the scope and intent of the Urban Parks Initiative and notify the applicant of the amount of the funding award. And whereas the applicant is willing to use the state's funds in accordance with applicable policies and laws, and is willing to enter into an agreement with the state for the above named project. Now therefore be it resolved that the Nutley Board of Commissioners, number one, the Mayor and Township of Nutley, or the successor to the office of Mayor, is hereby authorized to, A, make application for such a loan and or such a grant, B, provide additional application information, furnish such documents as may be required, and C, act as the authorized correspondent of the above named applicant. Two, in the event the state's funds are less than the total project cost specified above, the applicant has a balance of funding necessary to complete the project. Three, the applicant agrees to comply with all applicable federal, state, and local laws, rules, regulations, and its performance of the project. And four, this resolution shall take effect immediately. We have two resolutions, but, which are very similar, because one is to the Green Acres Program, one is to the Urban Parks Initiative, so it's a rollover grant. If my funding is available in the Urban Parks Initiative, it'll roll over and it won't cost the town anything. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
Whereas the Township of Nutley has a need to acquire dental plan services on behalf of the township, and whereas such services may be acquired as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provisions of N J S A nineteen, colon, forty four, A dash twenty point four, or twenty point five is appropriate, and whereas I M A C Insurance and Consulting shopped rates, but none of the quotes were comparable to the benefits the township currently has with Delta Dental. And whereas the township has negotiated with that Delta Dental of New Jersey, Inc., sixteen thirty nine Route ten, Parsippany, New Jersey, and has retained a two-year renewal rate with a zero percent increase. And whereas the anticipated cost for the service will not exceed three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars per year. And whereas funds will be available from accounts three dash zero one, five twenty six, two forty three, and three dash zero five, seven oh seven, two forty three, and will be certified by the Chief Financial Officer, subject to the adoption of the two thousand and twenty three municipal budget. And whereas Delta Dental of New Jersey has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that Delta Dental has not made any reportable contributions to a political or candidate committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Delta Dental from making any reportable contributions through the term of the contract. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley will authorize as the Commissioner of Parks and Public Property and/or the Mayor to enter into a contract with Delta Dental of New Jersey. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas raffle applications have been received from the followed, following organizations. Holy Family Church, license number nine, twenty three, off-premise fifty fifty cash raffle to be held Sunday, June eighteenth, two thousand and twenty three. Holy Family Church, license number ten, twenty three, off-premise fifty fifty cash raffle to be held Sunday, September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty three. Holy Family Church, license number eleven, twenty three, off-premise fifty fifty cash raffle to be held Sunday, December thirty first, two thousand and twenty three. Spring Garden School, P T O, license number twelve, twenty three, off-premise fifty fifty cash raffle to be held Friday, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty three. Radcliffe School, P T O, license number thirteen, twenty three, on-premise fifty fifty cash raffle to be held Friday, March thirty first, two thousand and twenty three. Nutley Family Service Bureau, license number fourteen, twenty three, uh, and license number fifteen, twenty three, and license number sixteen, twenty three, to be held Saturday, April twenty second, two thousand and twenty three. Nutley Music Booster, uh, license number seventeen, twenty three, on-premise fifty fifty cash raffle, and license number eighteen, twenty three, on-premise merchandise raffle to be held March nineteenth, two thousand and twenty three. Nutley Youth Baseball, uh, Club, license number nineteen, twenty three, on-premise merchandise raffle to be held Saturday, March twenty fifth, two thousand and twenty three. Nutley Youth, Youth Baseball Club, license number twenty, twenty three, off-premise fifty fifty cash raffle to be held Saturday, April eighth, two thousand and twenty three. Whereas the applications have been reviewed and approved by the Municipal Clerk and the Police Department. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the aforementioned licenses are hereby approved, and the Municipal Clerk is authorized to issue said licenses. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. This is on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, whereas a recent meeting of the Board of Commissioners was unanimously agreed to continue to allow fourteen holiday schedules for two thousand and twenty three. And whereas new for two thousand and twenty three, however, will be an ability to have one floating holiday where employees can choose between either June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty three, and November seventh, two thousand and twenty three. And whereas to allow sufficient time to accommodate this new flexibility, all employees shall notify and obtain approval from the department head by April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty three, as to their elected holiday. And whereas where multiple requests are made for a given holiday, seniority rules will apply to ensure that the township shall maintain necessary service levels for our residents, and whereas holidays do not accommodate and cannot be carried forward to a subsequent year. And whereas holiday schedules are negotiate, as negotiated in our respective collective bargaining labor contracts, shall take precedent over the holiday schedule contained herein. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, uh, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that the following days be considered as pays holidays as listed below. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Whereas bids for the two thousand and twenty acceptance of recycling vegetative waste to include leaf and grass clippings were received and opened on November thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen. And whereas S. Retundi and Sons, P L Box fourteen, oh, seven, Summit, New Jersey, was the low bidder for the removal and recycling Class B clean wood brush in the amount of nine dollars and eighty five cents per cubic yard for removal of recycling of Class C leaves in the amount of nine dollars and eighty five cents per yard, and for the removal and recycle of a Class C grass clippings in the amount of twenty one dollars and eighty five cents per cubic yard. And whereas S. Retundi has issued a one-year contract beginning December third, third, two thousand and nineteen, and an option for a two-year and one-year extension at the same price, and an agreed upon pre-stated increase subject to availability of funds in the subsequent, subsequent annual budget. Whereas the change order number one, that the contract has been authorized for increase to the contract in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and fifty three dollars and eighteen cents. And whereas funds are available from account number two oh one, four two two, two oh nine, an amount not to exceed six thousand, two hundred and fifty three dollars and eighteen cents, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification be attached to this resolution. Whereas the original contract amount is being increased in the amount of six thousand, two hundred and fifty three dollars and eighteen cents for a total adjusted contract of eighty one thousand, two hundred and fifty three dollars and eighteen cents. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners, Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, that change order number one is a change for the contract previously made by the Township of Nutley with S. Retundi and Sons is hereby authorized and approved under the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name and address for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks to the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Joan Rubino, forty eight North Road. I would like to know what you Commissioners know about the smart meters that are being installed in all of the homes in Nutley?
This is Rubino. Who, who's, who's, uh,
The public service is.
A public service? I didn't even know that was going on. I don't know if anybody else does.
Okay.
We received no notification.
What, what are smart meters? You know?
They're meters that they are putting into, the analog meters that record your usage are being replaced by smart meters, which can be remotely, um, you know, we all have that now, but these meters are smarter. And, uh, I don't know if you're aware of the electromagnetic fields that are produced by these meters and the health risks that are involved. There are people who are suffering, not necessarily in Nutley, because this is all over the United States. New Jersey is kind of late to go on board with the program. And, uh, people are suffering from ear pain, memory problems, sleep problems, dizziness, and, uh, it's possible, uh, cancer causing. The government and big business, they tell us that these things are perfectly safe. And, uh, I don't think we should believe it without more evidence. Uh, the government told us the COVID vaccine was great. You wouldn't get COVID, and you wouldn't spread it, and that was a big lie. Uh, so I think we have to really proceed with a little caution. Uh, I have a printout here. It's more of an advertisement, but it kind of gives you, and I'll give each one at the end, an overview of what these smart meters are like, and ways to protect yourself from the radiation, uh, which I think is pretty good.
Did they start installing them anywhere in Nutley yet?
Yes.
They have? Wow.
Uh, also, this, um, printout says they're a hundred and sixty times more powerful than cell phones. That could be kind of a business thing that it might be exaggerated a bit. However, I think we should take note that even one kilowatt of this, of the electromagnetic, uh, field against your ear with a cellphone is for twenty-four hours a day would be a lot. So, um, you take that into consideration. Now, some communities in the United States have been successful in putting a moratorium on these smart meters. Now, some communities in the United States have been successful in putting a moratorium on these smart meters. Um, and because of some of the complaints, I guess, that people have, and, um, they they have no idea. Most people who are having these installed don't realize that you can get these problems and how serious these things could be because in your house, but you're getting it from your neighbors. And children might be affected rather badly. I just thought that if there could be, if you would investigate it and see that if a moratorium could be put on it, if not, at least you can do as leaders of the community is send a letter to every resident with the pros and cons of this kind of a meter. And let the people, they, unless they stand out, I don't receive one, somebody told me about it. But the letter they send out, we tell them they can opt out. However, you have to pay a monthly fee. Now, why should that be? Why should anybody have to pay to opt out of a program? Uh, it's insane. So I I just think it's your responsibility to get this across to people and let them know what's happening with.
Rubino, welcome. You've given the clerk any information that you have.
I'll give you.
As you know, public services, uh, you know, governed by the Board of Public Utilities. Um, we will look into it. We will see what we can do from our end and certainly we don't want our our residents exposed to any kind of radiation and electromagnetic fields. You know, unnecessarily.
Like I said, this is more of an advertisement, just to give you an overview. But there is so much information out there regarding these smart meters and how detrimental they can be. So I.
These are outside the house, correct?
Pardon?
These are outside the house, not inside, right?
Right, right. If you have them inside, I have a building on Franklin Avenue. We have them inside in the basement.
So so they can be inside. Okay.
Um, because they're read from the street or would however they be them remotely. In my house on North Road, I have them in my garage. So they are not necessarily outside. One other thing I would like to ask about the flooding situation.
We have a draft of the report from our engineers. We're going through it, uh, at at present. And, um, I would hope within the next two or three weeks, we'll be able to make that public.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Rubino. Thank you for the information. Anybody else wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening?
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Lynn Costello, and I live at fifteen St. Paul's Place. If anybody had told me in December I would be here tonight talking with you, I would have said, you're crazy, but I must. And it's about smart meters. Uh, what happened was I did get a letter. Um, January sixth, I even more, I wrote it down. January sixth, I got the first letter saying that, oh, we're ready to change your meters. And, um, all the good things it would do, you would not get an estimated bill, you would get an exact bill. Um, and if there are any power outages, uh, they would know. However, um, someone told me that if there is a loose wire someplace, wires down, they that that gets handled first. But anyway. So I did mention in the letter that I was able, that we were able, my husband and I were able to opt out. So I went on the website and what I found was, um, yes, you would have to contact them, but you would have to pay a monthly fee of twelve dollars. That's a hundred and forty-four dollars a year in addition to your bill. And, uh, so it was it was kind of upsetting because the reason given was, well, we have to come by and read your meter. Now, a question I throw out, um, not to you in particular, but why couldn't we as, um, people with a phone, take a picture of the meter at a on a given day and just send it into them? Okay, why do we have to pay twelve dollars? There was no opt-out fee, like a one-time opt-out fee, but there was this twelve-dollar monthly fee. Um, so I, again, I ran off this, I have some things to to give to you, but I ran off this sheet, you know, uh, a question and answer kind of thing. And they and they say things like, didn't quite make sense, like reduce reduced P S E and G carbon dioxide emissions in the short term and the enabling of more renewable energy projects, the more robust energy efficiency efforts in the long term. And okay, I I don't know about the carbon dioxide emissions being reduced, but I I found something else, which I'll mention later. So, um, they 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 made a statement that said, um, you don't have to worry about these these phones, these, uh, excuse me, meters. They're okay. They're smart. They're okay. And in this culture today, when you say smart, well, smart is better, right? You got a better phone, you got a better this, better that, everything's smart. So you don't necessarily think it's a problem, but something said to me, check a little further. So I went on the internet and I am, I am a research person. I'm not a lawyer. I'm not a doctor. I'm not an Indian chief. I'm just a person who's concerned about the situation. It is so, it's like an onion. If I can use that analogy, it's an onion. Um, it's not just about, um, getting my exact bill. I pay my bills. We pay our bills every month. P S E and G or whenever they send them periodically. And and there's no problem. Okay? So there's a transmitter in the smartphone. And that transmitter enables, it enables the the smart meter to, um, find out which appliances and which machinery, in particular Wi-Fi wireless appliances are used in your house. What kind, I don't know if it's even a brand, but what kind of appliance? How often you use the appliance? During what hours you use the appliance? And, um, but they cautioned in the letter that we will not sell the information to a third party. Well, that also got me, uh, suspicious. And I started thinking, well, now, if you know, um, the hours that I use, uh, information most, um, let's say three o'clock, I use a lot of appliances. And at eight o'clock, okay, then they set me over a period of time. And they know, uh, Monday through Friday, they know, um, throughout the whole month or, uh, year, they know my patterns, they know my behavioral patterns. Okay? And then, um, uh, let's say Joe Schmo will be here, my neighbor and this neighbor, they have smart meters on their, to answer your question. It it was a little off, right? You're. Right, okay. But in hours, it's on the side of a building. Is that the, what does that mean?
Keep going.
Okay, so, um, um, they communicate, these these meters communicate with each other. And, uh, through that transmission. Again, I'm not technical, so I don't know what that transmission is. But anyway, all of that information is then sent to HUD. I don't, I I'm not saying they call it a HUD. I don't know if that's a acronym for something, but it's a center. So all of that data is collected. My data, their data, your data is all collected. So if I may say this, I'm not here to talk to um, the powers that be. I'm here to talk to people. I'm here to talk to not just citizens. This is all over the country. This is in every state. It I believe it started in California in twenty-ten. But before that, it was in Ireland, it was in England. And I know, and I know it was in, um, Sweden, other countries, I'm not sure. I I can't vouch for that. But it's it's been moving along. And I'll tell you, every person I talked to, you surprised me tonight. I think, um, Commissioner Pacheco, you said, what's a smart meter? That 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 absolutely shocked me. And this is what I'm finding. You mentioned to people, they don't know what's going on. And this is P S E and G. I mean, they they in in some sense, they're under your supervision, sort of, like they're in your town, right? So I don't know how that works, but I thought, you know, let me get out here and and say this. So all of these, um, smart meters are communicating, sending it to this center. And then it's analyzed by individuals and using a software algorithm. Right? And then it tells them, you know, hourly, this, that, and the other thing about you individually and about us collectively in the town, county, the state, whatever. Okay? And then they say, well, it's not sold to a third party. Well, I could see where a manufacturing company, let's say manufacturing, uh, I don't know, name, uh, uh, KitchenAid or something, um, would buy information from P S E and G and say, oh, okay, what 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 kind of appliances are they using? Are they using our appliances? When are they using it? How often are they using it? Are? And and so now that gives them some revenue, that gives them some some bucks. Uh, I don't know how, um, I could even think. I don't know if if they wanted to, uh, if somebody, uh, like in a court of law, if the guy says, oh, I I I wasn't, I wasn't home. I don't know. Maybe they could use the information to show that somebody was in the house. I I don't know. But anyhow. I found out, um, I think you might, well, I don't know what you've got there, but let me just just quickly go over some of the issues with these smart meters. Fire and safety issues. I have read excerpts from letters, mostly from California, because I don't know, I just happen to go on this one. Oh, I got it. I got it right here. I'll I'll give you this. Click it. You can look at it. Uh, uh, these, these smart meters can explode. They have exploded. I'm not saying all the time. I don't know what the percentage rate is. Okay? I'm just saying, and they can also go on fire. Okay, now, the question arises, they, this particular website here, they say, check with your insurance company to see who's liable for that. Is it the P S E and G? Is it the individual who owns the house? Or is it the town? Maybe maybe the town didn't do enough to, I don't, I don't know. You know, supervise or whatever, whatever you do. Um, here's another one, health issues, uh, uh, privacy issues. They're now invading your privacy. And again, not just mine, yours and yours and yours. What, when, how often are you home? Um, when, when is the 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 time when you most use the, uh, the utilities? The the, uh, the appliances? And then they maybe they can go back and charge you more for those hours. Why not? They have, I don't know if they have a monopoly in the state, but I mean, certainly, right? It's it's all P S E and G. Is there any other utility company in in in? Okay.
No.
So within that, then I would be correct in saying that within this small area, they have a monopoly. Okay, so what's what's for them not to raise up the monthly twelve-dollar fee that I would pay if I opt out? Um, my husband and I decided we waited out. We actually waited out. Um, and we did pro and con. And we found there were more cons, way more cons than pros to to keep, to, uh, to allow them, allow. Okay, this is the United States of America, to allow them to change our analog, which we have now. The analog meters do not have transmitters. They simply give them, they're very simple. They simply give the P S E and G, um, the amount of electricity, and I don't know if they also do the water. I don't know about that, but say electricity, that I know. All right? Um, and we said, this, this is, this is crazy because we found out these, as was said before, these smart meters emit, pulse out radiation. Now, this is EMF radiation. This is microwave radiation. And it was pointed out to you far more than the cell phones, far, far more. Uh, you know, you'd have to check with somebody. I I won't say anything that I didn't research because I knew zero in December, zero about this until I got this letter. And then I started asking my friends. I started asking people. They didn't know a thing, just like me, until I started looking this up. So I won't say anything I don't know. How about shielding these, uh, smart meters? Shielding them so that you can reduce the radiation that comes in to your house through your walls. Um, there's a, there's a bioelectromagnetic. It's a specialty that that is now being studied by your children, your grandchildren, colleges. And they are being hired to, uh, help communities, help people like you to to make decisions. Okay? Um, and and so, um, all of these, oh, and then they said to call the insurance company who's responsible. Okay, so that having been said, I, um, this is an aside. I just checked to see how many states were charging these opt-out fees, the one-time fee plus a monthly opt-out fee. I found fourteen states that did not charge either a one-time, one-time charge fee or a monthly fee. And they are Oregon, New Mexico, I'll give you a copy, Iowa, Colorado, Los Angeles, California. So that must be a certain spot. Uh, Central Hudson, New York State, Tennessee, Vermont, Virginia, Washington State, and Wisconsin. Comes to fourteen altogether. So now, uh, anybody who opts out. Look, we all know, um, times are tough, inflation. And people are trying to cut back on their spending. They're trying to spend wisely, right? Wisely. So who wants another twelve dollars added on to their bill every month for just, for what? When pass, when I know that in in Sweden, they agreed with the population that was sensitive to EMF, the radiation, they allowed them to send in a reading or a picture of their meter. And 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 that's fine. And then they could keep their analog. So there have been, um, compromises in 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 states. Okay? I just wanna, just, I'm just gonna glean to this. Now, diseases and symptoms linked to EMF, okay? Brain, cancer, geoblastoma, uh, acoustic neuroma. Now, these are all studied. I have, this is just just a partial view. I have studies in here, so you can see it. I'm not just talking, you know, blah, blah, blah. I wouldn't waste your time, and I don't think you'd allow me to waste your time, but it's in here. Okay? So and you can do far more, I'm sure, with your, um, you know, your ax, your, uh, ability to access, access things, excuse me. Uh, breast cancer, cardioarrhythmias, um, brachardia, tachardia, atrial flutter, I guess that's palpitations, high blood pressure, infertility, breast cancer, childhood leukemia, uh, elevated blood sugar, suppressed immunity, uh, tinnitus, the ringing of the ears, uh, breached intestinal barrier. Okay, we eat gut center. Okay, so I've gone through that. Now, there are other things where people who are sensitive to the to these, um, to these electrical waves. We can, our our brains, like our thinking, can't always detect it. But our nervous system can. And here's what these people are getting. It's called electrohypersensitivity. Headaches, insomnia, dizziness, tinnitus, concentration and memory problems, skin rashes, heart palpitations. Um, and some go away and some come back and and so on and so forth. And there's a, there's a doctor at the end of this. She specializes in the diagnosis and treatment of E H S. Okay, that that's been said. I really appreciate this because I want everybody to know, um, I want you to know about it. Um, you know, you you you're doing a job here for us, and i- it's important that that you know this. So, um, a friend of mine, uh, mailed me just tonight as a matter of fact. This website called emfwellness.com is from Tucson, Arizona. Okay? And it's a very friendly website. They have all different things you can click on. Now I'm going to focus on the schools. Okay, school assessments. And here's the first paragraph, real short. Children are exposed to all four types of EMS in their schools. But the levels of RF radiation are rising rapidly due to the addition of Wi-Fi in classrooms and the installation of cell towers near and around school campuses. Okay, so so what is that? Okay, so, so what does that mean for all of us? Well, here's the, I mean. Um, and here's another brief one. There was a Yale study, you can check it out here, um, by Dr. High Taylor, Professor of Obstetrics, Gynecology and Reproductive Sciences, Professor of Molecular, Cellular and Developmental Biology at Scale U of Medicine and Chief of Obstetrics. Students aren't the only ones affected by radio frequency, R F radiation from wireless devices in classrooms. A growing number of teachers and staff are reporting symptoms of R S sensitivity, which can include a constellation of efforts ranging on frequent headaches, dizziness, nausea to extreme fatigue and brain fog. All right, and you can read what he wrote, and he said to be studied even further. Okay. Um, now here's, here's one that, are you, just, now, oh. And I'm gonna give you this one. Um, uh, Arizona thing, all of these specialists, and they have their credentials, names, everything else. Who has studies, maybe, you need to have this, you need to know this if you don't already know it. And I, I, please, I am not talking down to anybody. I, I do not mean to do that. Uh, I think you know that by now. I just want, this is, this has gotta be, this has gotta be addressed. Um, I found on that website, get this, the Lawyers Committee on Wireless Radiation and Children's Health. Now, this is, I don't know how many pages, six pages, and I'm, I'm gonna read them to you. Swinkin and Turner, Washington, D C, please look into the turtles. Law Office of Robert J. Berg, Scarsdale, New York, Markham and Reed, Boston, M A. Dennis Levin, Livingston, Honolulu, Hawaii, Javi V. Lehman, P C. Nova, no, Novata, No- Novato, California. Cam Pennelli and Associates, P C, Merrick, New York. Law Office of Greg R. Leon, Lean, Tahoe City, California. Okay, and you'll, you'll get a copy. Well, I only have one copy, but you can look at it. There is, they're, they're names, they are printed. And here's their first paragraph. The rapid proliferation of wireless technologies has precipitated a revolution in education and a shift to widespread use of technology-based curricula. At the same time, scientists and medical professionals are documenting serious risks to human health from exposure to radio frequency radiation, R F R, emitted from all wireless devices, even at levels previously thought safe, with a particular concern with its impact on children, because they are, they are greater, they're more vulnerable, because their cells are still, um, uh, they're, 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 they're growing, is, is, is still growing, is, is happening. Their cell maturity is still happening. Um, it says, this dichotomy informs our efforts to take precautions to protect the most vulnerable among us and to examine the legal responsibilities of school administrators and others. Okay, in positions of authority to take preemptive action to prevent foreseeable harm. And I could go on, but it's all listed here, and this is, this is some of the things, the fiduciary duty of school administrators can be analyzed into distinct and separate duties with corresponding legally recognized rights of parents, children, and teachers. So this is like the administrators from the school in, 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 in conjunction with the teachers and parents. Um, school administrators, this is the lawyers now, school administrators have a duty of heightened vigilance, especially when they are well-informed of the foreseeable risks and preventable harms. Duty to be informed. From this basic responsibility derives the future duty of inquiry to investigate and become better informed. Next one, administrators have a legal obligation as fiduciaries to warn parents and, to warn parents and caretakers of all feasible risks. Administrators have a fiduciary obligation, again, you know, you could better define fiduciary, to secure informed consent from parents to permit their children to be wirelessly irradiated while in school. This is why I say this is an onion. This is about you and me and all of us. As parents, as commissioners, as grandparents, as parents, as citizens. I mean, this is, this is, um, can I say the best kept secret? This is the best kept secret. This is the United States of America. We have rights, we have a constitution, a bill of rights. This is a, this is a wonderful country, wonderful country. We have a constitution that no other country in the world has. We cannot, uh, let harm come to us physically and emotionally and, and mentally. And the better prepared you are as being in charge, then make us more aware of it to be, uh, you know, doing what we need to do. That's why we opted out of this, of this, uh, smart meter. With, the more we looked at it, I mean, it was our responsibility. It was, it was our, um, y- you know, anybody who came into the house would be irritated. But here's, here's the thing, you say, okay, in your house or in your school. You take a walk in the park, you walk down the street, you, you walk down Franklin Avenue. You can be irradiated. I, I don't, I don't mean to say anything that isn't here. But we're all being hit with radiation. And I just ask, what can, what can we all do in our different positions? Help us to help you, to help each other, especially the kids. Kids need the best. They are our future. And, and, um, and, and I mean, it just goes on and on that these, um, and I, and I, I just got this tonight.
Mayor, mayor, if I, if I can make an, a suggestion.
Yes.
If, if you, if you have something to write down my email address, uh, if you could email me your research and I'll have it checked out.
Lot of it too now.
Oh, yeah, I'll have it, I'll have it reviewed by our public health officials.
Yeah.
And, uh, get the ball rolling on having them research these, these harmful effects.
I, I had.
Mrs. Costello, we, we appreciate, you know, you bringing this to our attention, because we didn't know.
I can't believe that.
And, um, like again, public service, you know, as much as, you know, we're, we think of being the commissioners here, that we have a lot of, uh, say what goes on in our town. Public service has the ultimate say through the Board of Public Utilities on what happens. Um, but, uh, you bring some, you know, valid concerns that we all have. Um, when I get my letter, I'm opting out, I can tell you that.
Well, but here's the thing, why should we, why should you, why should I, why should we have to pay twelve dollars additional a month when there are fourteen, or let's see, uh, twelve states and two districts of, of parts of a state, or two states, why should we have to pay? Because we can just send it in, can't we, with our, with our phones, with our cell phones that, that emit radiation? And that's another thing. Um, we have to tell our kids, a simple thing like, do not hold your phone up to your ear. Don't do that, because they're irradiating the brain. And you want about brain tumors? I got brain tumors. You want brain, I got information about brain tumors. You know, and it, it, it's so absurd that it's, it, it's funny in a sense, but it's not. It, it, if it weren't true, it would be fun, but it's not. And for you, and the fact that you don't know, I'm appalled. Not because of you, but because nobody's telling you. P S E N G, who, who are they? Are, are, do they, let me ask you, do they have a contract with, with Nutley? To operate in Nutley? How does that work?
They work through the Board of Public Utilities, so they're you, they're, they're a utility, and you know, that, that works through the state, not through the local municipality.
So you have no say, I.
None at all, besides choosing your electric provider, which is not, still public services providing the, the electricity coming in and, and the, uh, metering and everything else. Mister, Mister Bruno, can you look into, see if any other municipalities have, uh, tried to, you know, opt out of the residents paying the, the opt-out fee? All right.
Yeah, that would.
And we think we could write maybe a letter to the Board of Public Utilities requesting that. We'll, we'll look into that too, Mrs. Rubina. You know, Mister Bruno, see what else is being done throughout the state.
Thank you.
Uh, so.
Thank you. Um, I, um, thank you for giving me the time, um, and I'll, I'll give you the, the letter. And then, you know, I can't Xerox everything, so here's, here's the letter from the lawyers. I think, yeah.
And, and if you have any other information they might have forgotten or, or overlooked or something.
I didn't remember something. Okay, that's another one. And then here these. And this is the other ones. Um, the birds, uh, the animals. Uh, Ohio, it's not a good place, way to go. There you go. And this one too. It's been all the work, but, um, yes, thank you. I found that, you know, if radiation can go this way in the air, and it can travel through walls, it can also go in the ground. They say, they, from what I read, three feet down. Now, they can't get to the deck, but three feet down. Imagine that. So, okay, let's take, let's take a nice Nutley-eyed person, uh, wants to grow some vegetables, and they dig in their yard. And, you know, three feet down, he put them, that, that's gonna be contaminated. I, I mean, it would seem to me. Um, what about, uh, I, I. Now, I feed sparrows in my yard. I have a whole community in, in the yard. I feed them. And when my neighbor this way, who, everything is fine with them. Everything's great. And they, they, they start, they're, 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 they're starting going. And my little birds are feeding. And they're, 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 they're little. What's gonna happen? We need the birds. We need, we need the, we need the bees. Um, I could, I know the fact sheet, and you're about to be, so I wanna give you two, I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, uh, we, we have to worry about the, um, plant life and the animals that are giving us a good environment. No, right? The bees have to pollinate. Uh, they're finding that bees, when they get around the, uh, cell towers, dead. They can't, they, they can't withstand. Now, I'll tell you an, and this is a true. We have a dog. Um, he thinks my husband is just, you know, great. And so he follows him everywhere. My husband goes down in his basement, and he's got his projects he's working on. Um, we, we have a, a, a gas meter, a twenty nineteen gas meter. And, um, it's, it's a, it's a, I just found out, but Lulu. I, I think he told him, he forgot. Yes. So, he always went down, the door goes down with my husband to sit there and everything. But in the past, it's several, many months. He doesn't wanna go down. He sits at the top of the steps, which has a turn in it, so he'll sit at the top, but he will not go down. So I put a leash on and I, I walked him down. And I said, go down, sit, go sit down with dad. And he didn't wanna go down, but when I got him down, within minutes, he was shaking like. Now, there was no reason for him to shake. He wasn't scared of anything. He didn't step on anything like, uh, I don't know, wire from the glass, or nothing like, he was shaking. I brought him upstairs into the kitchen, took the leash off, he was fine. So I believe that there are, are animals that can sense the pulse. Because the smear, smart smear, just a few away from my husband. And, and, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mrs. Costello, appreciate.
And if you have anything extra you wanna send our way, you, uh, you could send to me at the Health Department. It's jkelly@nutleynj.org.
Uh, okay, J Kelly.
And that way I could, I could forward it on to our, our, our public health officials and nurses.
Absolutely. I, I would love to know what, what comes of, you know, your, your efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have, the role on the, uh, thank Commissioner Tucci.
Took us a while, but we finally got there. You're welcome.
Good evening, good evening. My name is Lou Costello, and Lynn and I live at fifteen St. Paul's Place. Two, uh, two thousand and nineteen, a smart meter was put in our basement, a gas meter. Our electric meter is outside. As Lynn said, we got letters. We didn't want it then, but they said they were doing whole system all over. Now, when we got these new letters, let me, let me start, stop here. I was seventy-four at the time, I'll, I'll be seventy-eight. Up until that time, mayor, I didn't have a problem with my heart. Six months later, after this meter was installed, I went for my annual again. Said to the E K G, said to technician, do that E K G again. I knew something was wrong. I said, doctor, what's going on? He says, you have atrial fibrillation. I said, what? So, uh, why? What, what? They can't give you a good reason. He said, many things can cause it, but because of that, mayor, I had to go through nuclear stress tests. I had to go through M R Is, I had to go through CAT scans. I had to go through scoping in the back of my heart to make sure all the valves were okay and everything like that. Now, they did two cardio versions on two different times to bring the heart back into rhythm. Because the medication to bring the heart back into rhythm was terrible for me. I couldn't take it, couldn't take them. They brought the heart back into rhythm two times, and within two days, it was at a rhythm again, both times. So now I'm only on a blood thinner, Eliquis, and that's to prevent stroke. Now, like Lynn said, these letters came to us, and we called, opt out. But we didn't know until all of that research that Lynn did all over the country, atrial fibrillation, tac, uh, tachardia, tinnitus, or all these issues with these smart meters. Now I said, wow, that's probably the reason, because never had anything like that before. But anyway, for them to force this on us, we opted out. Okay, now we got calls. Oh, you wanna opt out? Yeah, we wanna opt out. We're gonna pay the fee. Okay, so confirmation number all over again. Now, a week ago, I got a, I got a call. He told me his name, supervisor, his big, he says, Mister Costello, you wanna opt out? He said, I says, yeah. I says, I do wanna opt out. He says, well, you have the old analog meter. This is the electric meter, which is outside the house. I said, yeah. He says, well, our new meter, we have an analog meter. It will work just that way, but this thing that you have is obsolete. Mayor Scott Kelly, these things have been working since I was a kid, a hundred years, these analog meters, mechanical. Okay, now, he said, this analog meter is so much better, and there's no frequency, there's no transmitter in it. I didn't say, sir, my research and my wife's research tells me something different, because there is a transmitter in that analog meter, and they can remotely control it. It looks the same, but there is a transmitter through all of that research that Lynn did all over the country, so they're lying to us. There, there is a transmitter in it, and they can control it remotely and put it on, and it's a smart meter again. So, all of this, now you have radiation in the basement and E M F and. So all of this, now you have radiation in the basement and EMF in the basement coming through the walls. And like Lynn said, all of these things, these meters, from what the experts say, they're a huge data collection. So if you have your meter and I have my meter, those meters are talking to each other all over the space and they're collecting all of this stuff. But the thing is, that's one thing, an invasion of our privacy. But causing us health issues, that's a completely different story. And this guy, he didn't know what to say. I says, look, I have atrial fibrillation and it happened six months after this meter was put in. Oh, well, Mr. Costello, he says, I, I'll get back to you. I don't wanna argue with your health issues. I said, well, what's the arguing about? I'm telling you, I tell him, but he never got back to me. That was almost two weeks ago, he never got back to me. But people said, in the, in all of the states, they will come and just take it, whether you're there or not, they will take that meter off and put the other one on. What they suggested is put a lock on it. So what we did, we put the sign on it, the opt out, the confirmation number, and we put a lock on it. I put a lock on it. He's not gonna take that, he's not gonna take that meter away because it's making me sick. I can't sleep right anymore. I'm up, uh, mostly tonight, I can't sleep anymore. So like Lynn said, that dog was shaking like crazy. He used to come down while I was working and everything and he will come down anymore. He, he, like this. So my point is to you, to, to all of you, to look into this. And I, 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 I know what, what you said, but people, they don't know about this. They don't know that these, this thing, these things are causing harm to people. And, uh, anytime somebody tells you, I'm gonna do this and in that research, there was a, there was a person who says, well, who gave you the authorize, authorization to do this? You know what they said? We gave ourselves the authorization to do this. Like you said, they're, they're so powerful, but why can they just do these things? This is our home, this is our living space. Why can they do these things? You know? So I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. And, uh, we appreciate you and your wife and Mrs. Rubino, uh, bringing this to our attention tonight. Commissioner Kelly said he's gonna have his health officials look into it.
Thank you.
Uh, we have, uh, our attorney look into our options as a municipality in, uh, protecting our residents. So appreciate, appreciate your time tonight. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to address the board of commissioners this evening? We will, uh, be going to executive session to discuss. Contract negotiations. Motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Whereas Section Eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter two thirty-one, Public Law nineteen seventy-five permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley moving to close executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Be for the result that at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution will take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Uh, before I vote, I'd just like to wish our mayor a very happy and healthy birthday today. Happy birthday, mayor.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Yeah, again.
Who, who we sing, who we sing?
No. I don't want to hear any of you sing.
Yeah, maybe.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. Uh, well, there'll be no further, uh, business conducted tonight. Any, uh, anything further, commissioners, before we, uh, have a motion to adjourn? The motion?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco. Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
And the time is now eight twenty.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.